Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council for April 6, 2021. I apologize for our brief delay, and we will take roll call. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Today, we don't have any ceremonial matters and presentations, so we'll go on to the postponements and orders of the day. Madam City Clerk, are there any postponements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have one postponement, item number seven regarding SB 1... Sorry, I lost my place really quickly. The fiscal year 2021 project proposed to receive funding from the road maintenance and rehabilitation account created by Senate Bill 1 is postponed to a date uncertain.
Okay, and if we can have a brief synopsis from staff as to why this item is being postponed, recognize Director Lee of Public Works. I apologize, Director Lee, I know you're unmuted, but unfortunately, we cannot hear...
I believe there's just an error in one of the numbers that needs to be corrected, and then this will be resubmitted.
Hopefully, you can hear me better now, Mayor and Councilwoman.
We can hear you just fine, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, we had realized we had used fiscal numbers 2021 in the staff report and the resolution, and we should be using fiscal year numbers projected for '21 and '22, so we'll make that correction and come back on May 4.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, the postponement is approved, and are there any requests to arrange the items on our agenda in order that they are not otherwise described in the agenda? So that would be the orders of the day portion of this item. Does anyone want to reorder any of the items on the agenda? That's the question. I'm seeing head shakes, and so let's go on to oral communications. Oral communications is the opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item not on the agenda. You'll be provided up to three minutes to provide your comments, and I would like to reiterate the process going forward for this year, as I'm conducting the meetings, that if the first speaker concludes and your hand is not raised, you will not be placed on the list to speak. And so our first two hands here that are up are from Jennifer Griffin and Rick Kitson, and so I reiterate, once Jennifer is completed with her comments, you will need to have your hand raised to be recognized to speak. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I just wanted to remind everyone that there are some significant dates coming up in the city of San Jose. San Jose has had a proposal to eliminate single-family housing. It has been... It came out last summer, I believe, from the... I think it was one of the 2040... One of their... Sorry, one of their planning groups, and now it is filtered up to the City Council. I believe the vote is in June. I'm very, very concerned about this. This would be similar to what's happened in Oregon, where they would allow four-plexes anywhere across the city. San Jose has a lot of historical neighborhoods. The area of Willow Glen was a separate city until 1930. I had relatives that lived in there during the orchard days, and I am very, very concerned that this type of legislation by the city of San Jose would completely destroy the character and neighborhood of Willow Glen. There's a lot of historic properties there. Also, the Shasta Handset Neighborhood, which is along the Alameda, I have several relatives that have owned or own in there. There are houses back to 1865 in that neighborhood. How can you even condone having four-plexes on... Are you going to take down homes that are 1865, 1875? It doesn't... It makes no sense. I'm very, very concerned about this, and I believe that the people that live in those neighborhoods in Willow Glen and Shasta Handset are fighting hard to make sure this does not happen to their neighborhoods and their cities. I would hate to see this happen to Cupertino, and we are fighting hard to make sure that that never happens. But I am very, very concerned about the precedent that San Jose would be doing if they do this. Yes, it's their city, but it affects us that live on the edges of it, such as my neighborhood, and also I have relatives in San Jose that are directly affected. We had a relative that sold because of the Santana Row Urban Village, and she had an 85-foot building stuck up against her rental. Anyway, thank you, please bear that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Rick Kitson, and I remind everyone that if your hand isn't up at this point, you will not be recognized for oral communications. We have a total of five more speakers. They are Rick Norrie, a call-in user 1, Connie Cunningham, and Stephen Scharf. Welcome, Rick.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Great. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you so much for letting me speak this evening. I have a shockingly normal announcement to make. We have in our midst here in Cupertino a wonderful Thai restaurant that actually opened exactly one year ago. How's that for timing? But they're still here. Pineapple Thai, located on Main Street, is celebrating the Thai New Year on April 17. Outdoor seating, outdoor event with wonderful Thai performances and wonderful Thai food. We're encouraging everyone to come join us. If you've seen Thai dancing, you won't want to miss it, and if you haven't seen it, you especially won't want to miss it. Seating is available on two tops, seating for two, seating for four, seating for six. Children under eight are free, or eight and under are free. Nine to 12 years old are $20. Please come out, it's all appropriately socially distanced and safe, so there's... I can't think of a better way to celebrate the New Year of 2564 than go out and celebrate in Cupertino, so we hope you will join us. For information on this, visit the Chamber website, or visit Pineapple Thai, and the link will lead you to your ticket options. So encourage everyone to join us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Rick. Our next speaker is Norrie. Welcome, Norrie.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Magical Bridge Playground is really magical place for all ability, all ages, and for all children. It is founded by Magical Bridge Foundation, which partner with corporation like Apple, Google, Walmart, and many more, as well as individual donors. The first Magical Bridge Playground was built in Paraodo. It is also under construction in Mountain View, Sanibel, Santa Clara, Red Rose City, and Morgan Hill. Magical Bridge in Singapore is also under construction. Olenka, founder of Magical Bridge Foundation, and I think that Memorial Park is the best location to build all-inclusive playground. It is the biggest park in Cupertino, next Queensland Community Center, Sports Center, tennis court, baseball field, senior center, and three big green fields. Memorial Park is easy access from Stevens Creek of '85. Therefore, many families can visit from other cities. The large unused pond can be used for Magical Bridge Playground. Large senior apartment, memory care units will be built at the Westport Next Memorial Park. This playground is also for aging populations. Magical Bridge can offer special need enrichment activities, socialization, recreation classes at the Queensland Community Center. Treehouse can be built at where the gazebo is located now, and the flower garden, where children can touch and smell those flowers. City is concerned about events. Festival are on weekends several times a year. Most performances are in the evening and summer. Lack of parking lot can be resolved if some of parking area could be open to public. Pond is away from Stevens Creek, so it is quiet. I believe that the children with special needs also enjoy the interaction with other children, not keep them in the quiet corners. I also believe that other children can learn compassion, empathy, and treat an equal from young age. Please consider to build the first all-inclusive Magical Bridge Playground in Memorial Park. This is good for Cupertino as well. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Norrie. Our next speaker is designated as a call-in. The indicator is call-in user underscore 1, and so if you recognize this as yourself, please unmute yourself, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak. And Madam City Clerk, if you would please remind the phone speaker what they need to press in order to unmute themselves.
It's star 6, Mayor.
Okay. So repeating, you'll need to press star 6. If you are call-in user 1 on the phone, you will need to press star 6 in order to unmute yourself. Welcome.
Okay, yes, thank you. Dear Mayor, councilmembers, and guests, and also city residents, and actually today I also have a cemetery and advocate as a person with me as well, so he will have like a few sentences at the end, so just aware there. And I very appreciate it along the way, the previous council and the current council understanding, and I just want to first want to update a little bit, just about the backyard, the little buildup, play structure or shape, because the pandemic actually somehow, I think the legal team somehow pushed it, and no other city, county pushed it, so right now there's... Just heard there's some kind of deadline, you know, can't get permit to demolish the structure, and this regarding the application, already submitted at least five times because of various reasons. The last thing we heard actually was okay, but it's using the legal something going on, but no other, as I said, no other city and county, and pushed it, because this kind of stood up, didn't even require the permit. And current structure actually is different from the previous one we torn down. It was that time was stood up towards the county standards, and it was this place was not long ago, was granted to county, was annexed not long ago, and by the real estate agent who sold it to us, say it was on county. So we in good faith, even with barely a little bit, you know, over for the setback part, we torn down and rebuilt it, and so the part of the facade, the wall, because this very scene, even seen as a normal facade and shittering because it was just play structure, was the coverboard was in the front and a little bit side leaning on it, store purpose, store their purpose anyway, and all the wings and the rings still come in, but from the foundation to the roof and the walls, all built in, not built out for the guidance, and even that time we asked for permit. They say doesn't need it, and didn't want issue. We should beg them because it was a great deal for us, torn down, pay money the first time, and from the front and the side might look similar and change, but it's totally different. I know there's pictures still going on, but that was not the... We was built behind those very same walls, which was leaning on it, and a lot of rings and...
15 seconds.
...come in, so for the most reason, application, and email even indicated that the permit was... The application was fine, but just reference the legal excuse in this case, the judge's ruling. I know the court, the judge, the attorney, it's not their fault. We forgive everyone because they got feed in from whoever put it there, and this city doesn't require people...
All right, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Connie Cunningham, followed by Stephen Scharf. Welcome, Connie.
Oh, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers for the time to speak at oral communications. I wanted to take this time to thank Mayor Darcy Paul for his speech on March 27 at the Stop Asian Hate Rally at the Saratoga City Hall. He joined with Yan Zhao, the mayor of City of Saratoga, Mariko Sayak, the mayor of the town of Los Gatos, Liz Gibbons, the mayor of City of Campbell, Sean Luthold, mayor of the city of Monte Sereno, who were sponsoring this wonderful event. There were a number of other speakers as well, the congressional representative Anna Eshu, state assembly member Evan Low, state senator David Cortezzi, and county supervisor Joe Sumitian, and there were others, I simply can't name them all this evening. While I was there, I met a Taiwanese woman who had traveled from Danville to be there. I met several other people, some I already knew, some who were new to me. The... Excuse me, that rally was a powerful voice against hate, and an equally powerful call for love to be used against hate. Again, I just wanted to thank Mayor Paul for being there and for representing our city so well. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Our next and last speaker is Stephen Scharf. Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor Paul and City Council. Mostly, you may have received your ballot from the county today for Measure A, which is the parcel tax for Cupertino million school district. I would just urge everyone to fill that out, vote yes, and send it back in. Simply put, CUSD needs the money. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, former Mayor Scharf, and we appreciate your conciseness as well. Let us go to the agenda again. Before we get to the enumerated items under reports by council and staff, I do have some closed session reports to provide, and for the closed session, the special closed session meeting that was held on March 24, 2021, we had, under item number one pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, our conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. Those litigations are identified by the Huang family versus the city of Cupertino in Santa Clara County Superior Court. That case number is 19CV 347316, as well as the city of Ocata et al. versus PG&E, which is in San Francisco Superior Court, and that case number is CGC 20585483. The report for this item is as follows. The council discussed with legal counsel these pending cases, for which discussion in open session would prejudice the city in the litigation, and no reportable action was taken. For the second item in this closed session, that was a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation and the initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.94, and there were three potential cases. The report out is as follows. Council discussed with legal counsel the potential initiation of litigation for these three matters for which discussion in open session would prejudice the city in the potential litigation. For two of the eight matters, no reportable action was taken. For the remaining matter, council gave its approval to initiate legal action by a unanimous vote with Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, and councilmembers Willie, Moore, and Way voting yes. The action, the defendants, and the other particulars shall, once formally commenced, be disclosed to any person upon inquiry as provided in Government Code Section 54957.1. And we also had a special closed session meeting held earlier today, April 6, 2021. This has to be a closed session because it deals with personnel, it's confidential matters, and so it requires us that we hold it in closed session. It was the public employment recruitment under Government Code Section 54957B1, and the title was the city attorney recruitment, and the report out from that item is that no reportable action was taken. I will go on to item number two now on our agenda, and the subject is a set of brief reports on councilmember activities and brief announcements. And so to give you a little bit of context about this, since this is a new item on our agendas, either in this agenda or the prior agenda, I believe this is the first time we've seen this. This comes as a result of a desire from our council to be able to have these reports briefly at the beginning of our meeting, and so we will still have the opportunity at the end of the meeting for council to report out on comments and future agenda items. But this precludes the need for people wanting to hear, you know, some of those summaries that are not related to our committee assignments, which is agenda item four here, not having to wait another five or six hours. And so I ask our council to be brief. You do not have to have a report out here, but this is just an opportunity to bring something brief to the public in an early part of our agenda. And so what I'll do is set people on a minute. If you have a desire to speak at this point from council, please raise your hand. I see Councilmember Way. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'd like to follow with Connie's comment. We participated, actually Mayor Paul represented us, participated in the Saratoga Rally, Stop Asian Hate, March 27. I'd like to report that we are going to host in front of our city hall this coming Saturday from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., and we have Congressman Ro Khanna is going to join us, and Dave Cortezi, and Evan Low, and three county board supervisors, Cindy, Joe, and Otto, and plus Deputy Attorney General from the state of California, Eric Chen, and lots of our local organizations. So please join us this coming Saturday at 1:00 in front of our city hall and library to 2:00, and then we're going to have a small little parade through Rodriguez, De Enza, Stevens Creek, and come back with Tory, and with a very minor marching band, so join us for standing solidarity for... Against hate crimes, against racism this coming Saturday at 1:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Way, and I'll just briefly thank you again for your efforts on March 24, which I did recognize during that rally. I thank the public for coming out. I also wanted to thank Councilmember Moore for being present as well. She indicated to me afterwards, hey, I was there, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank her for the support. Councilmember Willie, we have your hand up next.
Yeah, just a quick one for the resident that was talking about the potential for a all-inclusive playground at Memorial Park, just letting her know. I proposed an item, a work plan item for Memorial Park, which I hope will give us more input to the changes at Memorial Park, at which time, an all-inclusive playground might be one of the items we can consider. So letting her know that I think that's a place for us to be able to discuss it, and that's all for this week.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Anyone else care to give any updates? I actually slipped my update in there after Councilmember Way, and you know, again, thank you so much to the community. It's, you know, through our differences we often have, you know, in good faith on various issues. It is very heartening to know that we do agree on these just very basic human decency-related issues. Oh, I see Vice Mayor Chow has your hand up. Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. Just want to say thanks, thank everyone for hosting all these rallies. I wasn't able to attend the last one, but then my organization, Young American Policy Advocates, did host a webinar where we have invited a representative from the district attorney's office and someone who leads patrol effort in San Francisco to speak to the high schoolers about this issue. A lot of high schoolers are concerned, and they... Some people even say they are facing racial slurs in their own schools, and we had attendees from Meaty High School, and they are concerned also. So I think we... I really think all these rallies are not enough, or we need actions, because it's not just hate crimes, crimes in general targeting issues has been underreported, and it didn't happen just last year. It is, from what I heard from the activists in San Francisco and New York, this is an ongoing problem for many years, and we were ignored. And now it's good that we are getting attention, but how long would it last? Would there be any action to actually make changes? That's what we are... We really need to have concerted effort.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow, if you could wrap up. We're trying to keep this brief for the minute. Okay, great.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'd be glad to attend the rally this Saturday. Thank you, Councilmember Way, for hosting.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and you know, I'm really happy to be able to kick that off for Cupertino as well. So we have our city manager update on item number three. It's an update on emergency response efforts. Welcome, Deb.
Thank you, I'll keep this short. There are some big changes coming as the county stays in the orange tier for now. The biggest change so far is that indoor gatherings, such as concerts and conferences, will be allowed as of April 15, and of course, it'll have safety protocols in place and some capacity requirements outlined depending on the venue. On June 15, the state of California announced plans to lift all coronavirus restrictions, provided there are enough COVID-19 vaccines available for everyone aged 16 and older, and hospitalizations remain low and stable. There will be a mask mandate for the foreseeable future, and there will be some limits on large indoor events or conventions of more than 5,000 until the fall. The travel, there's no self-quarantine required if the person is vaccinated. If the person is not vaccinated, the 10-day self-quarantine requirement is still in place. Short vaccine status that as of April 15, everyone will be eligible for the vaccine, however, there's still a shortage coming to the state and thus the county. 23.6% of Santa Clara County is fully vaccinated with their second dose, or in Johnson and Johnson's case, single dose. And just a reminder, that one... Someone can still catch the virus even after vaccination. Vaccinations are meant to prevent serious illness, therefore hospitalization or death. Testing continue and is needed to chart our positivity rates. There'll be another testing opportunity on April 7 at the senior center. There's plenty of appointments since we're seeing a sharp drop-off in testing, and just to track the case rate. In Cupertino, there are 836 cases by zip code and 847 cases by city. The last time I reported at a city council meeting, it was 812 and 823 respectively. This is moving in the same direction, same direction as the rest of the county, leveling off with some increases that people are watching. And that's the end of my report. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Deb? Vice Mayor Chow.
Oh, no, sorry.
Your hands up from before. Okay, great. So let's go on to item number four, the report on committee assignments, and we'll... We have this as a regular item, and so we'll have a couple of minutes each to report out on any meetings that we've been to with regard to, and I just want to remind everyone, our specific committee assignments that we are representing our jurisdiction on for the various boards and agencies. And so we'll have, again, a couple of minutes to report out on the meetings that we've taken since March 16 on those types of assignments. Would anyone like to go first? I don't see hands up, so while you guys get... Councilmember Moore, get your hand up.
Well, I'm not going to report because you said after March 16, but I did attend the March 11 Policy Advisory Committee meeting for the VTA. I just want to mention that.
Okay, great. Wonderful, thank you. The next hand up is from Councilmember Way. Councilmember Way?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So on March 19, I attended Silicon Valley Clean Energy's Second Orientation to learn about their customers, programs, finance, and administrative actions. It's really very nice to learn all the details. And on March 23, I attended the Sacramento Legislative Adversity Day that's hosted by Silicon Valley Leadership Group, and we met the state senators and assembly members and to understand specific bills. A lot of them does affect our city's land use and control, so it's very good to learn the details and ask questions in person. On March 23, I again attended the Silicon Valley Clean Energy's Finance Administrative Meeting and to learn all about the finance of our Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And March 29, I attended the city's legislative strategic plan... And March 29th, I attended the city's Legislative Strategic Plan Committee. This is the first meeting that I've attended, so lots of learning to do, and I believe Mayor Paul was there too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Way. That's the Fiscal Strategic Planning Committee. So.
Yes.
Very good. So we'll go on to Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Willie.
Yeah. March 25th, we had our regular Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability meeting, and since the system is up and running, we didn't have any technical issues to discuss, but there is one new member that would want to join. Kind of a little bit surprising. The IRS is wanting to be one of the members that can access the system during emergencies. And the other topic was getting a grant of $300,000 from the California Emergency Fund so that we can be maintaining the system that is now put in place. So we're up and running and set to maintain it, and that'll be it for this week.
Okay, great. Councilmember Willie, thank you very much. I'll go ahead and report out for my role on the Valley Transit Authority Board. We are in the midst of the general manager recruitment. The former general manager, Nuria Fernandez, moved on from VTA for a fantastic reason, and that was she was appointed to the Biden administration, and so we have a really great friend at the Department of Transportation on the federal level now. But with regard to the recruitment of the general manager, that is an ongoing process, and again, that's closed for obvious reasons, dealing with the confidentiality of personnel-related issues. We had a regular meeting on April 1st, and you know, I want to thank our staff for working with me with regard to one of the, one of the grants that was issued by VTA, and that had to do with innovative transit. You know, through what is essentially a series of miscommunications, we ended up not actually applying for grants under a qualifying grant application from VTA for our Via Shuttle. And of course, our Via Shuttle, because of the pandemic, has been suspended, and we're not paying out on the contract, but it's been so useful when it was active for people trying to get point-to-point and to try to find useful alternatives that were transit-supported. So I want to thank our staff for being very open about interfacing with the VTA with regard to, you know, our perceived discouragement from, you know, applying for this grant funding. And so after, you know, a few rounds between the VTA staff and our staff, and as a board member, I helped to, you know, facilitate this kind of conversation. I think we do have a good common understanding that, you know, in the future, we're very interested in trying to get support from our public agency for transportation. And for our part, on the, you know, behalf of the city of Cupertino, if those types of grant funding opportunities are there in the future, we will absolutely take them irrespective of, you know, what initial feedback we might be getting from the agency is. So that was actually part of the agenda for the VTA Board Meeting this past April 1st. I didn't pull it from consent because the request was, out of some $10 million plus of funding, to take the remainder that they had left, which was roughly $200,000 and some change, and re-initiate a process, as opposed to granting Cupertino's Via Shuttle program, the funds themselves. And so rather than go through a long, expensive process for a relatively small amount of money, that amount of money is going to go into the next round of this innovative transit funding for VTA. So lesson learned. You know, VTA obviously does quite a bit, and it is an agency that is not only tasked with, you know, addressing the transit needs of our county, but also with congestion relief. And so, you know, ultimately, when we're talking about roads and congestion and things that, you know, cars have to contend with, especially in up economies, that's under VTA's purview too. And so I think we're maintaining a very good relationship in that regard. Happy to be on that board, and I'll keep everyone apprised with regard to how the progress goes on our general management recruitment as well. On March 24th, we had the West Valley Mayor's Meeting comprised of the cities of Campbell, Cupertino, Saratoga, Los Gatos, and Monta Sorino. We meet on a monthly basis along with our respective city managers. One of the things that we talked about was the rally that was held in Saratoga, and so we're, I think, getting along very, very well. We were able to send out a thank you letter, so thank you to our staff, to Ashlyn's thanks for, you know, sending that out to all of our speakers at the rally on March 24th, and it was signed on behalf of all five of the mayors of the West Valley. So that was a really great statement, to be able to say that we stand united in affirmation against these very, very hateful and unnecessary types of attitudes and actions. March 29th, as Councilmember Way mentioned, we did have the Fiscal Strategic Planning Committee. One of the points that I made, and I think it's an ongoing concern, is the fact that the Fiscal Strategic Planning Committee, as well as the Economic Development Committee, are the two committees that we have in Cupertino that don't actually have a charter, and so we don't know precisely what they do. You can kind of glean from their titles what they might do, and there are past minutes, but the meeting schedules have been erratic at best over the course of the last decade for each of these committees. And so what I will be asking for in our upcoming fiscal year is to have a written charter, whether it be by resolution or by ordinance for these two committees. And the other issue, of course, is the fact that if you don't have a description of your committee itself, you really don't know who comprises the committee and what the rules are for procedure. So, you know, I think they're good committees. We spoke about some fiscal updates, but it would be good to really identify what the purpose is for these two committees. So I'm looking forward to being able to take that on in the upcoming fiscal year. I don't see any other hands raised with regard to our updates on committee assignments. And so at this point, I will go on to item number five through 15 on our consent calendar, which is next. I see Councilmember Moore with her hand raised. Councilmember Moore, any comments on the consent? Do you have a request to poll any items?
Yes, Mayor Paul, I would like to poll the minutes. I'm trying to get the number for it. It's the March 16th. It's item six, approve. Now, let's see, I've got the right one here. Yes, I want to look at the March 16th meeting minutes.
Okay, that is item six.
Okay.
Are there any other items that you wish to poll from the consent calendar?
No, that's it. I had already made a request to have the accounts receivable item corrected, and that's already been corrected and amended on the agenda.
Okay, so there's a request to poll item number six. Let me go to the members of the public. I see Connie Cunningham as well as Peggy Griffin with her hands up. I will unmute you, Connie. If you have an item that you'd like to poll from the agenda, please let us know, from the consent agenda, rather.
Yes, I'd like to also speak on the March 16th city council meetings for correction.
Okay. Are there any other items that you're wishing to poll?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, great. Let's go on to Peggy. Peggy, do you have any items other than item six that you would like to poll from the consent calendar?
Yes, item 14, Residential and Mixed Use Residential Design Standards Work Plan.
Okay, are there any other items that you'd like to poll, Peggy?
No, thank you.
Okay, very good. So let's bring this back to council. Can I have a motion for consent calendar items five through 15, except for items number six and 14?
So Luke.
Mayor, item seven is also postponed.
Correct. With the advisement that we postpone item seven already. So is there a second to Councilmember Way's motion?
Second.
Okay, that was simultaneous. Would anyone like to yield to the other council member with regard to?
Oh, yield.
Okay, council member, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Moore, seconds. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct a roll call vote on items five through 15, accepting items six, seven, and 14 on our consent calendar.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, let's go to item number six. That's the approval, or consideration, I should say, of the approval of the March 16th city council minutes. Councilmember Moore, would you like to introduce this item with respect to the reason that you are pulling the draft minutes for March 16th?
Okay, thank you. It is item 16, the very last paragraph, and where it says, Willie moved and Moore seconded to accept the general plan annual review report, including the general plan annual housing element progress report, and requested a comparison chart with neighboring cities of their regional housing needs allocation processed by percentage. We have, and the motion carried unanimously, we were actually, or I was actually asking for more than just the RENA processed by percentage, but specifically what had been permitted and also what had been entitled. And we have gotten the information about what was permitted, and I understand that getting the information about what was entitled is more difficult, but there was a second part to that. So, and I do appreciate staff having provided very promptly what the RENA percentages that were permitted for our surrounding cities. We got that really, really quickly, but we're looking for something a little bit more like what we have provided, which is to city council here. We've got our RENA progress entitlements in Cupertino, and we have a really, we had a really great table in the previous report showing that. And what we're looking for is if we can have the surrounding cities, and the reason for that comparison was because we wanted to see, since we have, for instance, for our low and very low-income housing, we have doubled the entitlements for what we were required, actually more than doubled, and we wanted to see if our surrounding cities are in the same position, because that's part of our city telling our story, communicating our story to the wider community. So there was, I would just add that we wanted to, as an edit, that we requested a comparison chart with neighboring cities by percentage, showing both the permitted and the entitled number of units. So it should, showing that, adding that extra level in there. I would appreciate that.
Okay, let us, before we go to a motion to consider, go to any members of the public that have any comments on this. I don't see any hands raised from the public, and so I'll, oh, I do now. Connie Cunningham, and I'll remind any other members of the public, if you want to speak on this item, just like with oral communications, you'll need to raise your hand by the time that our first speaker, Connie, has completed her remarks. Welcome, Connie.
Thank you. Yes, I was not wanting to talk specifically on the point that Councilmember Moore talked about, but I am wanting to talk on agenda item 16, the 2020 general plan annual report. I'm speaking specifically to a correction that needs to be made to my comments at that time. It says in the minutes right now that Connie Cunningham was concerned about entitlements to build housing that are not being built. And that doesn't actually say what my point was. My point at the time was that since Marina and the Hamptons may never build on their entitlements, because it has been so many years since they received their entitlements, my point was that the city look beyond those two projects to find other locations to consider housing in order to meet our new RENA targets. So I would thank you if you could please make that correction.
Okay, thank you, Connie. At this point, I'll, and we don't have any other hands up for speakers. At this point, I'll bring you back up to council, but I would like to open it with a suggestion that our city clerk go back, review the meeting itself, and take into account Councilmember Moore's comment, as well as our public speaker, Connie Cunningham's comment, to see if those comport with potential edits that could be made to this item and bring it back to us at our April 20th meeting. And I'll check in with our city clerk here. Does that sound like a process that would be workable from your office's perspective?
Yes, Mayor, I certainly will.
Okay, great. And so are there other comments or a desire to place a motion on the table, having heard Councilmember Moore's concern, as well as the members of the public, or the member of the public's concern, rather? Any comment at this point or to put a motion on the table? Councilmember Moore.
Mayor Paul, I'm just curious what the motion would be. Do we need to make a motion that we request the city clerk look at the edits suggested by Housing Commissioner Connie Cunningham and myself, Councilmember Moore? Is that, do we need to do that?
You are perfectly within your right to bring forward that as a motion to memorialize the direction. I was simply proffering up a potential course of action, but if you'd like to bring that motion, please feel free to do so.
Well, it's just simply a process question. Do we need to make a motion that we request that these two items be reviewed and brought back to us? Or can you, as mayor, simply request that the city clerk review the minutes and bring it back without having the motion?
I'll tell you my perspective on it. I mean, if nobody objected to my suggestion, then perfectly fine, but, you know, I do see a lot of utility in putting it forward as a motion, and so if you'd like to do that, that's perfectly fine with me.
Okay. That will, okay. So I move that the, let's see, that the city clerk review the edits for the March 16th, 2021 minutes, and looking at the comments added from Housing Commissioner Connie Cunningham to look at other locations, I'm abbreviating her comments, and that Councilmember Moore looked, would like to have the words entitled and permitted units, that percentage added. I, okay. I think that.
Would anyone like to second Councilmember Moore's motion?
I'll second that, but add that to bring back to the council for approval in the next meeting.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, do you accept that modification to your motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Then we have a motion on the table with a second, and I don't see any other hands raised to give commentary, so let us conduct a roll call vote. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we are on to item number 14, and the subject on that consent calendar item that was pulled is the consultant agreement for the residential and mixed-use residential design standards work program item for the fiscal year 2020 to 21 and associated budget modification. Are there any staff members that would like to give us a brief summary of this item before I provide the opportunity for a member of the public who pulled this to speak to the item?
Yes, hi, Mayor Paul, Director of Community Element. Thank you for the opportunity to respond. This is just as you mentioned, it's the consultant agreement for the work, this item in the work program. Originally, we had estimated a certain dollar amount, I believe it's $200,000. Obviously, once we've gone through the process and obtained or secured consultant through RFP process and through negotiations, and also looking at the scope of work, that has grown a little bit, so we're coming back to modify that request, and that's all there is. The scope of work is attached as well to the staff report, so happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Fu. Are there any questions from council of staff before we turn it over to the member of the public? Okay, so we'll go ahead and give that opportunity for the public to speak. I actually don't see any hands raised, but Peggy, and now your hand is raised, so please feel free. We'll put you on the regular three minutes. If you need more time, let us know afterward.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, councilmembers and staff. I just request that in the Exhibit A of the project outreach materials entitled, let's see, in the contract, page four of Exhibit A defines stakeholder interviews. page four of exhibit A defines stakeholder interviews. And it lists that city staff select decision makers and developers slash recent applicants. Further down, it says that they'll be up to 16 people or groups that they'll meet with. And these key stakeholders will be identified by the staff. This is a real sore spot because in 2014, when the general plan was approved, stakeholders were behind the scenes and had significant influence without being balanced. I think that the city council should have a say in reviewing who's identified as key stakeholders. I'd like to see that exhibit A modified to identify that and allow the city council their input. Thank you.
Thank you Peggy, and thank you for keeping it concise as well. So let's go back to city council here. I see that, council member Moore, you have your hand raised. Before we start entertaining commentary, can we put a motion on the table to, 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 to consider? And council member Moore, did you have such a motion that you'd like to bring forth at this point?
Well, I'm, I'm kind of thinking that perhaps it might be wise if we created an ad hoc subcommittee to look into the stakeholder process somehow. So I'm not really sure how to go about creating that mechanism in order to do that, but it seems to have some potential value and to have some continuation and involvement of city council in the process to, to see if it's going the way we want it to.
Okay, thank you, council member Moore. I see that our city attorney has her microphone unmuted. Did you want to speak to this item? Or perhaps it's just a function of my, my Zoom. I don't see the.
I did it. I did not intend to unmute my mic.
Okay, okay. I apologize for that. Okay, so we have council, well, let's go back to council member Moore. Council member Moore, you're talking about a subcommittee to form to examine the identification of the stakeholders within this, within this agenda item. Did you want to make a motion to that effect to create that subcommittee prior to us discussing, discussing that item? If it turns out that it's not feasible, then of course that'll come out in the course of the discussion as well.
Sure. I move that we create an ad hoc subcommittee to review the stakeholder process.
Okay, and, and I apologize for not calling on hands, or maybe I can. The next hand is council member Willie. Followed by council member Wei. Council member Willie, did you want to second that motion for the purpose of discussion?
Sure, yes, I'll second.
Okay, great. So now we have a motion and a second. The motion's on the table. Council member Willie, you still have your hand up. Did you want to speak to the motion at this time?
Yeah, I, I wanted to say that, boy, I really liked what the resident had to say that reviewing the stakeholder list, I think, is fundamental. I mean, you, you want to do the, set the rules right before we go and spend, before city spends a lot of time, you know, going down that path. And so, boy, I, I didn't catch it, and I want to thank the resident for catching it. And so at that point, I was simply going to make a motion, but now that we've made a slightly different motion, which I think does essentially the same type of thing. I'm okay with it being a subcommittee versus the full council getting to review the stakeholder list.
Okay, great. Council member Wei, you have your hand raised, followed by vice mayor Chow.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. So I would like to ask the staff about the implementation of, because this looks pretty specific for this item. So does the staff any comments on this recommendation?
We can certainly bring back a list of potential stakeholders for the ad hoc committee for review. We can certainly do that.
Okay, so it's, okay, good. I want to know if we pass this motion, motion with the staff knows, you know, how to implement it, have a procedure to implement it.
Okay, great. Thank you, council member Wei, and thank you, Director Fu. It, it sounds like this would be something that's feasible. Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised next.
Yeah, thank you. So, sounds like the list of stakeholders, thank you Peggy for bringing this up. I think, yeah, we had went through the exact same process in 2015. And there were, oh, 2013. And so these interviews will be confidential. But then I remember in 2014, there, we were able to get public records requests, but only some surveys that they filled out. So I think one concern is, will the consultant become a way that there might be communication between consultant and any future project applicant? And then, and they will not be part of the public records. So I would like to request that the consultant should succeed the city staff or specific city account in all communications regarding this project. And then second, I think the, this state design standard is meant to see how we can have a better design for mixed use. However, if your stakeholder doesn't include residents who live near these commercial sites, there are a lot of single family neighborhoods around them, then this started out lopsided. So I wonder how the staff plan to address that issue.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Did staff want to address Vice Mayor Chow's question in the second part for comments?
I would just say that we'll do our best to collect as diverse of a list as possible. We'll, of course, work as a city as a whole to, to propose that draft list and discuss it with the committee for any additional additions or subtractions or edits.
No, according to what it's written right now, facilitate up to 16, 30 minutes to one hour meetings with stakeholders. We ask that staff be responsible for noticing and meeting of, sorry, not this.
Yes, I see.
So the staff would be, no, not this part. I think the, the language that's written here points out the stakeholders are specifically only the, the developers. That's the problem. Okay, let me, yeah, sorry.
Okay, let's go on to, I, I'm trying to remember, keeping track of giving everyone a fair opportunity to give comments. Council member Moore, I think, did you give comments following the motion already, or?
I, I don't know. I was just thinking that what I, what I believe I'm hearing from the vice mayor is a friendly amendment to the, to my motion that the ad hoc committee members be de facto stakeholder members.
And that being the case, do you accept it as such, an amendment to your original motion?
Yes.
Okay, and, and council member Willie, do you accept that as the secondor of the motion?
Yes.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, we have the city attorney. Did you want to say something, Heather?
I, I believe, just to clarify, and perhaps the vice mayor was going to do this, that the intent was, and my recommendation would be, you have the, a subcommittee of the council that's comprised of just the council members. But I think maybe to, to move forward with the vice mayor's intent, you could amend the scope of work to state that the stakeholder interviews will include residents as, as well as developers and recent applicants, which is, who's noted in that list in the scope of work now. And, and vice mayor, correct me if that's not capturing your comment.
Okay, so, so Heather, you're saying that it could perhaps be captured not by modifying the, you know, the nature of the subcommittee, but simply by modifying the language?
Yes.
Correct in the, in the material that we have here. Okay, council member Moore, would you be willing to modify your motion to make that language amendment in the materials that was just described by our city attorney?
Well, if I understand that correctly, Mayor Paul, that then, so I, my understanding was that we would have the, the ad hoc committee members be members of the, the stakeholders. But now that is being removed to having some kind of, I, I don't know how you would select residents, but we are obviously residents, being on city council. So.
All right, let me, let me, I'm sorry, let me just interject, in, in case, this is in fact a, a misconstruction of what the city attorney was suggesting. The, the way I read it is that in your motion to create this subcommittee comprised of two council members, that is not affected. What, what the city attorney is suggesting is that where council member, where Vice Mayor Chow stated that the stakeholders would essentially be identified by, as, as, as an applicant, as, as a property owner, we would change the language in the materials to indicate that stakeholders could also be comprised of residents. And that's how I read our city attorney's suggestion. If that's incorrect, please correct that and, and let us know what your suggestion was, was really geared towards, Madam City Attorney.
And maybe it's also clarifying the original motion, which I took to be creating an ad hoc committee of the counts, two council members to review the list of people who would be included in those stakeholder interviews. But correct, but maybe there's a clarification that needs to happen to the original motion.
Right. And, and your suggested language change was, was what?
In addition to that, so.
In addition to that, it would indicate that residents could be considered in that list of interviews, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, you, you weren't suggesting that we change the composition of the subcommittee to include people outside of the, the city council?
That's correct.
That's right, okay. Okay, I, I think that gets to your concern, council member Moore. If that, if that doesn't, please feel free to, you know, let me know I'm completely off base or, you know, what your concern actually was here.
Well, essentially, you know, having seen some earlier processes unfold, which the vice mayor was alluding to, I would want to see some council members essentially going through the whole process. You know, if, if it's as an observer, so be it. But that we are able to observe the process and be able to report back to council that, that we felt that this was all, it was all done in good faith, that the, the balance of the stakeholders members was, was something we felt that is, you know, fair and representative of the community in a, in a balanced way. And then we would report back. So I'm looking to avoid the perception that some, in, some members of the public have over some previous processes where they did not feel that things were, were as balanced as they could have been, if that makes sense.
No, I think, I think that's, that's a, that's a very good point. Madam City Attorney, if you want to speak to that point in terms of whether it would be permissible to have council presence, either a council member or two, some, some non-majority presence of council during these stakeholder interviews. I, I think that would probably be, you know, a, a useful point for our discussions going forward on this topic.
Yeah, this ultimately is going to result in amendments to the city's zoning code and general plan. And so that's a legislative action. We don't have the due process concerns that are at place when the city council's reviewing specific development applications. So while it would be unusual, I, I not immediately seeing a problem.
Okay, great. And, and I know that there are all sorts of things, right? I mean, for, for example, I, I wanted to be able to sit in on interviews of, you know, design build, you know, bidders in, in our library expansion process. I, I think it really just depends on what it is we're looking at, what the legal contours are. So, so thank you, Madam City Attorney, for, for your input there. It, it sounds like it's, it's, it's possible, although, you know, of course, not, not, not our regular process. But here, I, I think a lot of it is what we're defining as the regularity of the process in, in, in terms of this going forward. Did we have any other input that staff wanted to make with regard to this? I, I do have hands raised from council as well, from council member Wei and Vice Mayor Chow. Before we go back to council for, for further comments here. Okay, I, I don't see any microphones being unmuted, so I'll go over to council member Wei, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. This is going to be brief. I, I do think the original motion is a, a good motion because it, you had two council members to, to weighing on the stakeholders. So once the stakeholders are being fairly distributed, then that's the issue we're looking at. So I don't see anything, I don't think any need to add to the original motion because once we add the stakeholders, then it seems what, you know, that's what we're trying to fix, right? That stakeholders would maybe include residents, including businesses, include all the stakeholders that needs to be there. So I would think that's, I like the original motion.
Okay, well, let me ask Director Fu at this point, that, do you think that, you know, our original motion from council would allow staff to have that flexibility, you know, if we're working with this ad hoc subcommittee? Well, I, I should say, if you were working with the ad hoc subcommittee, to be able to inject the different nature of stakeholders into the process? Or, or do you think that extra language would be good that we've now put on the table here?
I, I think what if the city council decides that works for the process, we'll do our best to incorporate that. I will, I will say, you know, sometimes some stakeholders, individuals may not be as, as comfortable if there is our elected official participating in the process. So potentially, you could have folks that don't want to participate. But something for, for you to, to consider.
Okay, thanks, fair enough. Our next hand is raised from Vice Mayor Chow, followed by council member Moore. Vice Mayor Chow.
Hello, hi. So we are not suggesting that the council members join in the meeting. I think the council members are just maybe reviewing the list of stakeholders being Rachel, who participated in the meetings. And then also, the reason why we need an amendment to the motion is, take a look at this paragraph in the scope of work. The stakeholders are in the highlighted portion, with various individuals or small groups of people with like interests, including city staff, select city decision makers, developers slash resident applicants. The scope of work right now does not include the residents. So if we are to also include residents, then likely the 16 meetings proposed in the scope of work might not be enough. So I'd like to ask the staff, do we need to increase the number of meetings if we are including residents also?
So, so I guess two, two, two responses. One, I think my response would be the same. Having a committee reviewing the list potentially could impact who will wish to be on the list. Because you're no longer, no longer, you're now a public, right? The list is becoming public for review and determination. In terms of, of increasing the number, we can certainly do that. We'll have to go back to the consultants, see what, what does that do with the cost? And I think the language itself, talking about folks with like interest in a list, some examples, I'm not, I don't think that was limited to just that particular list. We can certainly add on to that language to include residents or any other type of participants that the council wish thinks is appropriate.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, was there anything else before I go on to? No, okay, great. Council member Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. And I really appreciate seeing this particular screen up. So my concern and, and my want is to also with those, when you're looking at the deliverables, where it says facilitate up to 16, 30 minute to one hour meetings with stakeholders, I would want to have the ad hoc committee present and in the, in these group stake. would want to have the ad hoc committee present and in, in these group stakeholder meetings. And, and ultimately, you know, what I, what I want to not see happen is, for instance, because we're looking at potentially buffer zones between residential, that we don't end up from one of these stakeholder meetings with a heavy, heavy developer presence, and you end up with the buffer being defined as, for example, and I'm sure this would never happen, but that you have a 10-foot setback from a residential property line with a 50-foot max height, and that's considered a, an appropriate buffer zone. That's the type of thing I would like to, to, you know, make sure that, that some of these things that are defined really are representative of the, the individuals living near some of these mixed-use developments. So I would like to have the ad hoc committee have the ability to be present and be considered, the stakeholders.
Mayor, may I respond?
Yes, please do. I, I was gonna invite that response, but I was also gonna interject a question as to whether the phrase "select decision makers" did encompass the possibility of one or two members of city council being there?
Yeah, it certainly includes that, and I think having council members or, or the ad hoc committee as part of the interviewees, or a stakeholder group makes sense. I, I again will still caution, having the, the, the committee members sit in, in other words, facilitate these interviews, I think that, that'd be problematic potentially for, for folks that may or may not wanna be in the presence of the elected officials, whether intimidated or not, or not, for a variety of different reasons. I, I think it would just be, it would be more forthcoming if, if it's not facilitated by, by council members.
Sure. Okay, um, well, let me ask you a final question before, well, actually, Councilmember Willie has his hand up, and he's been very patient in comments, so Councilmember Willie.
Well, if, if Vice Mayor Chow can put her document back up, it makes it a lot easier. And so, yeah, I, 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 you know, the more we talk about this, the, the stronger my view becomes, and that is, the various individual or small groups of people, I really feel that that doesn't need to specify residents. I mean, I, I'm gonna go off on a little bit of a tangent here, but when we allocate X amount of money for a particular project, and then we expect city staff to go off and use that the way we had intended, and it doesn't necessarily happen. Just, yeah, here we go, we say, small groups of people, and city staff will go off and create small groups of people, but without that specific wording, residents, well, you got your small group of people. And so I, I feel pretty strongly that it actually does need to be in there. I'm real glad that the resident brought this up, and we, we, we need to have what I consider to be the most important person, and that is, the, the affected residents. You know, that, you, you just can't do this to, to the community without their involvement. So, that's my comment.
Great, thank you for the comment, Councilmember Willie. I, I will try to close this out and call for a, a vote on the motion that's on the table by asking, and Vice Mayor Chow, you can, you can stop sharing your screen if you like, at this point, but by, by asking staff whether they think they can turn this over, because it does seem like there is a request for this ad hoc subcommittee to work with staff and to bring this back for some adjustments to how this is described with regard to stakeholders and process. And so, how, how long does staff think it would take to confer with the members of the subcommittee, conduct that work, and then bring this back for further review and consideration for approval?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I just wanna clarify, are you talking about the stakeholder list, or are you talking about making modifications to the contract scope?
Uh, no, I'm not talking about modifications to the contract scope. I'm talking about the, I, I, I'm talking about the motion that's on the table with regard to working with the subcommittee, and perhaps modifying some of the language within the staff report here, that helps us define what the stakeholders are in, in the first place, and to be able to take that feedback from the subcommittee so that we can revisit this with that feedback implemented. About how long do you think that process would take? And I guess to be much more specific about it, do you think that we could implement this by the time of our next council meeting, which of course would need to happen next week, because that's when we release our materials for a, a meeting that's two weeks out? Or do you think perhaps we should be looking at this at some time in May, if we're, you know, going forward with this, this ad hoc subcommittee?
I, I would prefer we can get started as soon as possible and secure the consultant as quickly as possible. I think the, the efforts in trying to solidify a list of, of stakeholders, that could begin as soon as the contract's been initiated. It's, it's up to the city to provide that list to the consultant. So, what, once we, like to have this contract secured, and then we can work with the committee to come up with, with a stakeholder list.
Okay, so I'm hearing sooner rather than later, and that there's an appetite probably to work if we pass this motion and we designate two people for the subcommittee to work with that subcommittee, you know, sometime this week, it sounds like, to?
We can do that concurrently to any other than the process, whether it's inventory analysis, data collection, whatever process, we, we can do that. I guess, Mayor, you're, you're looking to see, you wanna see the stakeholder list finalized this week or next week, is that what you're asking? I guess what I'm saying is, we don't necessarily need to finalize that right away. It's, it's, it's a big project with a lot of processes, so.
Let me, let me try this. We can confirm, we can confirm the contract with the change in scope and the wording to add residents, and do the stakeholder list with the subcommittee after the contract is executed.
Yeah. So I'm gonna go ahead and call on Vice Mayor Chow with regard to, to that. I, I do have some thoughts on that, but let, let me go to my counsel first. Vice Mayor Chow.
Yes, so I, I agree with city manager, I think we have two issues. One is, the scope of work needs to include the residents, and that should be done today so that the contract, the, the call, this could be sent out. And then we can form the subcommittee, and then, then they can develop the stakeholder list along the way that my, that, then that's not urgent. And I agree with the staff, that, I think, I don't think the council members should be sitting in those meetings. I do agree we should help develop the, the list, or develop the criteria to create the list, but we shouldn't be sitting in the meetings, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure that the term stakeholders needs to be altered in, in this contract. I, I would think that that is, that, that's our prerogative, but under, under Community Open House, what, which was the page that Vice Mayor Chow was showing, under Deliverables, these were the meetings facilitate up to 16 30-minute to one-hour meetings with stakeholders. Maybe that just needs to be defined, because I'm not talking about the interviews, it's if you're going to have a group meeting with the stakeholders, where you're going to have a discussion about, you know, XYZ design standards, and that type of a conversation, whether or not you're gonna have different building articulation, height, setback, any of these questions, that's the kind, that's the type of meeting that I would hope that the ad hoc committee would be able to be in attendance for. I'm not personally, personally so concerned about being in on interviews, but if there is to be a group meeting discussing what the actual standards are, and kind of some back and forth conversation about that, that's, that's where I'd really like to see this, the ad hoc committee, and make sure definitely that we've got residents present.
Okay, great. So the motion right now is to create this ad hoc subcommittee, and there are some language modifications suggested by the city attorney to, to, to include residents in the potential list of stakeholders? Am I getting that correct?
I, I believe the motion would be to, A, approve the, the contract with the modification of adding resident to the list of stakeholders that would be included in the interviews, and B, to create a subcommittee of two members of the city council, which I suggest that you identify in the motion, or that there's a discussion about who those members would be, to work with staff to create the list of stakeholders that would be included in those 16 interview meetings.
Okay, I, I'm with you there. My plan was to see if the motion passes, and then have a second motion to identify the members of the subcommittee. Do you think that would work out?
Yes, yes.
So, so, okay, great. Councilmember Moore, you still have your hand up?
I put my hand back up, because it sounds as though we have a, a friendly amendment to approve the contract, and I don't know who's making it, approving the contract, adding residents in the, in the stakeholders section. I don't know if that, was that, did we already have that friendly amendment made?
Uh, no, I, you know, I, I, I think you, you caught a really good nuance in the flow of the discussion. My, my intent in my, my comments a few minutes ago was to basically hold up approval of the contract until what we're requesting seems solidified and shored up, but I think for understandable reasons, staff would like to go forward. I, I, I never heard you, you indicating that you are gonna move for approval of the contract, so, if, if you wish to take that up, but nobody is, from what I heard, suggesting that as a friendly amendment from council.
No, truly, no one is adding that, that we amend and approve the contract adding resident stakeholders, and have the ad hoc committee participate.
I, I didn't, but you're free to amend your motion to reflect that, if you like.
I'm willing to go ahead and say, make a friendly amendment to add the word residents to the contract verbiage.
Okay, well, great, but, but would you, would you be okay with putting the approval of the, 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 the contract to go forward as, as requested by staff in this item, Councilmember Willie, at this point?
Yeah, the last question I would have is, refresh my memory, didn't we approve it at the previous council meeting? Didn't we approve the contract for them? I mean, this was a minutes, uh, review item.
Uh, no, no, this is, no, we're on to item number 14, and the recommended action is that we approve, adopt a resolution to award a consultant agreement for the residential and mixed-use residential design. So, so, so the first item?
Put it in bed.
I'm, I'm sorry, who was speaking? I'm sorry, who was speaking?
Mayor, that was a staff member with their microphone on, I muted them.
Oh, they muted, okay. So, so the first item under, under this was to award the consultant agreement for, for this work, and then authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the consultant agreement. Just to be clear, we don't have a consultant chosen at this point, do we?
Do, we have a consultant, and that's reflected on the contract scope.
Okay, got it, got it, got it. So, so it's not a matter of going out for, you know, a request for proposals, or, or bids, or anything like that? We're, we're at the point where there's a, there's a, there's a consultant that is there, and they're awaiting approval of the contract itself. And so, okay, you're, so you're wanting approval of that to, to move forward? And so the question really is, do we hold up that approval until we can get the modifications that are being requested, or do we, do we authorize that approval now, make the modification, and then, and, and then also create the subcommittee to do as we described here? Are, are we comfortable with doing that at this point, or do we want to continue the approval of the, the agreement itself to a future, to a future council meeting, when we feel more comfort with what's set in front of us? Okay, I see three hands raised. Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Wei.
Could you clarify a little what exactly we are looking for in this scope of work? I know that we have requested objective standards. When I say that, I mean, our existing standards that are not objective, and then we should clarify them, specify them in an objective manner, so that there is more clear standard to follow. However, reading this scope of work, it appears this work is creating new objective standards to streamline the process, rather than reviewing our existing standards to make them, to, to make the vague descriptive standards objective. So will, my question is, will this consulting team review our existing municipal code or general plan to make recommendations on revising the existing code or language to be objective, in addition to the new standards?
Uh, yes, Mayor Paul, if I may respond to Vice Mayor Chow? Yes, Vice Mayor Chow, that is listed as task one in, in their scope of work, that they intend on performing that inventory analysis and data collection of our existing requirements, before they set forth with public outreach process, which will incorporate the stakeholder interviews as part of that, and then before they, they come up with the draft materials, there's obviously a lot more details within those three separate tasks.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thanks, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, I would be requesting that Councilmember Willie additionally add that we, we're moving to approve the contract with, with the modifications which we had already, already discussed. Alternatively, we would be having the ad hoc committee go look at the contract, make comments back to the city council, and, and then approve it at that point? That, that to me, sounds like what the alternative is, anyway. So I feel comfortable with, with the changes, and, and having the, you know, a second set of eyes, the ad hoc committee, looking into the, the stakeholder process, being involved in the stakeholder process, and being able to, to make comments on, you know, after you have the, the first round of information, collecting the matrix of what the current design standards are, having, getting a chance to look at that and, and, and comment. So I feel comfortable with moving ahead. So I would like to hear, what, what are, what are the unintended consequences of, of doing that, if, if there are any?
And, and did you direct that to anyone in particular, Councilmember Moore?
Um, well, I suppose I'd be asking Councilmember Willie if, if he would also add that we are moving to approve the contract with the modifications which we have discussed.
I, I would agree. I think that's appropriate, and I, I don't think it's, you know, really a stretch from what staff had previously requested tonight under the consent penalty there, so yeah.
Okay, you know, I, I think we're converging on, on, you know, the, the right course of action here. You know, my, my point is that, you know, in, in talking about, you know, potentially withholding approval at this point, is that you're, it, it's, it's more of a stick, right? But if you, you're okay with providing that direction, then I'll take that as a modification of your motion, Councilmember Moore, and Councilmember Willie agrees to that modification?
Yes.
To incorporate the approval as requested by the staff in the recommended action. And before I go to Councilmember Wei, a, a quick clarifying question to staff, with regard to the insertion of the description of, of residents as being part of the stakeholders, is that a description in the resolution, or is that in some other material that's before us here?
We can insert that in the contract scope of work.
Okay, so are you saying in addition to the resolution, or instead of the resolution? So, so would it just be in the resolu, oh, I'm sorry, would it just be in the contract, or would it be both in the contract and the resolution?
I, I think, I think in the, in the scope of work, it suffices, but.
Would, would be good, because that's where the work is being done after.
Correct.
Okay, great. Councilmember Wei.
Um, yes, I, okay, so I need to understand what's on the table, but I think the absence is, we are, I think we should approve this project, because, you know, there's urgency in there, and then the, the subcommittee that's going to work on the stakeholders, I think that's a really important part that this council would like to do, and add residents, that should be enough, because the stakeholder, the, the subcommittee is just informing, we as a council. a council can tweak that. So I think the simple way is approve the contract, add residents in there, and then say we're going to have a subcommittee of two council members work with the staff on stakeholder scope. That would make it simpler, and we can follow up on that.
Sounds good. It seems like we are at, what I am hearing is a unanimity there, so a good discussion process. If there are no other comments at this point, I would like to go ahead and provide us with the opportunity to take the roll call. But I did see one hand raised from the public, but I think we did have the public hearing. We asked for members of the public to comment already. And so I'll go ahead and ask the city clerk here, not seeing any more comments or unmuted microphones from council or the staff at this point, to take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye, but I would like to, I'm sorry, I would like to hear the motion again. All discussion is a little confusing, what exactly is motion on the table?
I would agree that it would be helpful for staff to have some clarity on the scope of this subcommittee's work. If Councilmember Moore could clarify that as in her motion, and seconded by John Willie.
Okay, it's my understanding that we are part of the stakeholders and that we have the ability to participate or be present in the interviews and in the stakeholder meetings. Is that correct?
At the risk of throwing some gum in the works, in the scope of work, it currently says that decision makers are involved in, can be involved in the interview process. Of course, council are decision makers, you are decision makers for the city. So I would suggest the following, that, I'm not going to try and reword the whole motion, but it kind of goes like this, that you approve the contract with the change in scope to add the word residents into the change to be inclusive, and that secondarily a subcommittee be set up to review the stakeholder list and participate as interviewees, but to be in the, and that would be the end. And then to kind of address your comment, Councilmember Moore, about participating or being in the room with the other, like, big group interviews, to have highly elected officials, you know, at the council level in those meetings could have a very chilling effect. So I agree with Vice Mayor Chow that while you review the stakeholder list and you can see that it's been expanded to include residents or other people other than those that might be heavy-handed in design, to be all-inclusive, that you participate as decision makers in the interview process.
Okay, so the issue that I would have with that, the lack of presence in those meetings, is because we have, similar to a developer and a developer's representative, we have been looking at the design standards for a number of years now, whereas residents who are not particularly familiar with the general plan or the municipal code walking into a meeting are going to have a less weighty amount of data and information about what our current plans are, or potentially not have a, just even the spatial recognition of what we're talking about if you're saying a one-to-one setback, or a one and a half to one, or these types of things, where these are issues which we, you know, have been looking at for a while and understand, so I think we're limiting ourselves. But I would ask the council about what they think there.
Well, I also would add that in the scope of work for this, there's a study session both with the planning commission and the city council where you will be providing input. There's, I think, someone correct me if I'm wrong?
No, that's correct, and that's correct. And also too, I think this is a little bit different than some of the other previous, prior projects that folks may remember it, this is not a project-based process. So that more immediate association wouldn't necessarily be present. And there will also be community workshops as well.
Is there anything which is actually, from a legal standpoint, saying that a city council member couldn't be present in a stakeholder meeting?
No, our city attorney has already answered that, there is not a limitation legally on this. So let's, Councilmember Way, you have your hand up. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand up as well.
I would like to address Councilmember Moore's concerns. You know, as decision makers, we are going to make decisions in the end. I totally understand with my 11 years on school board, a presence of a governing board or a city council into these meetings are intimidating to, so our job as a subcommittee is to appoint the reference or expertise to, that be able to work on this. So that's important. This subcommittee is very important to find the stakeholders that can and have the knowledge, and that's what we can control. And I do believe, I understand, you know, Councilmember Moore would like to, because she has a lot of expertise, but we can find that as the decision maker body, it would not, even if it's not against the law, it's not good to have that prior knowledge already in the decision, and when we, in the council, we are predestined to this, or pre-biased. So I think we need to kind of stand back, pick the right stakeholders and let them do their job, and then the final will come to us for decision. That's when we can put our decision and our expertise into the final product. So I think the staff knows that it is intimidating, and as my experience, even with parents when we have study groups, they would not want us to be there because they just feel intimidated. So as a council member, I think we have a different kind of decision-making. So that's--
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore, Vice Mayor Chow.
So my, so my understanding to address Councilmember Moore's concern, my understanding is these 16 potential meetings, we, residents are not going to be in the same meeting as project applicants who are more expert. And then we are likely going to have a separate meeting for space in residence, where likely we can provide more information to bring them up to date on what all these terms means, what we are trying to do, so they understand. So they, but then I do think we need to give the project applicants the space to communicate with staff, as they usually do, more freely on what we, they really need to be successful. Throughout this process, we want all these developers to be successful in Cupertino too, when we are addressing residents concerns. Ultimately, we want to build stuff in Cupertino, that, that's, I think, our goal here, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore. And Councilmember Moore, as the original movement, you've been asked to clarify your motion, and so I'll just note that we, I don't think we actually have the clarification, although I will say, I think your articulation of what your motion was actually was clear. The sticking point is essentially whether council members should be in on these interviews, and maybe the way to get to consensus here is to take that point off the table and ask that we make a decision on it after the subcommittee has been given the opportunity to do some work, and perhaps comes back at the future study session in council and talks about it, and perhaps we can make a decision at that point, given the benefit of the evolution of those discussions. So that's just a suggestion before you make your comment.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. My concern is that what you'll end up with for your stakeholder group is two residents who are concerned about what the design standards are going to be near their home, up against 14 developers, union members, what else? I mean, we've seen this before, we've seen how this happened, and that was in the community benefits process. And if you go back to the public records requests for what that group was comprised of, you had people who didn't live in Cupertino representing union and other groups who came and helped affect that process, and it didn't look like there were residents of the community who had the same weight and influence there as the other individuals. And that is the sort of thing I want to see avoided in this process, and that is why I would say that you should have some council members present. And I'm very concerned that, you talk about intimidation, I think we've seen that here most clearly, and that we need to provide a more transparent and balanced process here. And, you know, if we have to get into the nitty-gritty of how that, how the stakeholders as a group would be made up, if you're then going to go, we're going to have 50% of the 16 be residents who live in X, Y, Z situation, scenario, and versus developers, then let's, maybe we need to consider that.
Okay, I don't have any other hands raised, but I think we do have some potential clarity on what it is that the movement wants to see as the motion. Madam City Attorney, having been the requister of the clarification, do you feel that we have clarity with regard to the motion on the table?
I understand the motion, I would just confirm with Councilmember Way as well, because I think she asked for clarification as well.
Well, I think that, I think that, well, let's go on to the seconder of the motion. Councilmember Willie, do you understand that the motion as described by Councilmember Moore to be the motion that you seconded?
Yes, yes, I feel comfortable that I, I understand that what has now been stated does reflect what I was seconding.
You were seconding, okay. Now, let's go to Councilmember Way, apparently, and Vice Mayor Chow, who does have her hand up. But for, in the interest of clarification, do you feel you have clarity as to what the motion on the table is?
Not really, because I sort of concentrated on the importance of the subcommittee to appoint the stakeholders. We could appoint 50% more residents, or, see, that's the prerogative of the subcommittee. I don't understand whether the details are in the proposal or not, like, if the subcommittee gets into the interviews, are that included or not? Have we taken off, or have we still in there?
That part is in the motion, Councilmember Way, that the subcommittee members are able to be part of the interviews, so--
So I would have concerns with that, because I think this will, we're making decisions as we talk, maybe we should--
Councilmember Way, let me let you go into line on the hands. The question was whether you have clarity as to procedurally, because you were asking for the clarity, and so I'm going to go to Vice Mayor Chow, who has her hand up, and again, if you want to make another comment after Vice Mayor Chow, please just raise your hand. Vice Mayor Chow?
I'd like to propose a substitute motion, basically, essentially the same as Councilmember Moore's motion, but take out the requirement that a council or two council members will sit in on all the interviews.
Will you accept a friendly amendment to your substitute motion, Vice Mayor Chow, to ask that we revisit that question as to whether council members will be able to sit in on these interviews at a future date before the interviews occur?
No, I'm satisfied with just a subcommittee deciding the stakeholder list that we interview as Councilmember Way stated that we could, the subcommittee could make a recommendation to include more residents as maybe.
Okay, is there a second to Vice Mayor Chow's motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. So Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand up. Did you want to speak to your motion further? So now your hand is down. Did anyone want to speak to Vice Mayor Chow's motion? And I'll remind us that the procedure is such that substitute motions are voted on first, and if there are no other further comments, then Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so it's my understanding that the motion that I put forth would allow the ad hoc committee members to be part of the stakeholders, okay? I just want to clarify that everyone's understanding that, as I am. Okay, and then the second part is that, is that the vice mayor is, has altered that role, and I want to have the altered role explained to me. So you would have a, the ad hoc committee would be influencing who would be on the stakeholders committee, the way I have it, influencing who would be on the stakeholders committee, and then be part of the stakeholders committee. My understanding is that the vice mayor's motion would have the, the ad hoc committee would be influencing the stakeholder composition, but would not be part of the stakeholders. Do I understand that correctly?
No, no, that's not what I mean. Okay, so according to the scope of work right now, selective decision makers could be part of the stakeholders. That means we could be interviewed, maybe all five of us could be interviewed separately by the consultants. We are part, we could be part of the stakeholders, but that doesn't mean we will be sitting on the meetings with other stakeholders. That's what my motion does not include. So my motion did not change the scope of work where decision makers could be part of the stakeholders. That's still there. We are just not sitting in other people's meeting.
Okay, but there's nothing that's specifying that the ad hoc committee or the city council is, that we are--
Decide, the subcommittee can decide to include the city council members as part of the stakeholders. That's the authority of the subcommittee to decide, that all the council members, maybe planning commissioners should be interviewed also, or maybe housing commissioners. That--
I'm requiring that the ad hoc committee be part of the stakeholders, and the assumption is that the ad hoc committee would be individuals who are particularly interested in this topic and want to go diving into it, and that they would automatically be stakeholders.
What do you, sorry, what do you mean by be part of the stakeholders?
Already are, you are--
We are not, we are not having one whole meeting with all the stakeholders in one meeting, that's not what it's going to be, right? It's going to be 16 individual meetings. And then council members who are not the part of the subcommittee, committee could still be stakeholders. We are not saying, the subcommittee does not really say the subcommittee has to be part of the stakeholders, no. Subcommittee helps decide who might be the stakeholders, which could include the state subcommittee, could include other city council members, could include other commissioners. But the subcommittee just helps to decide that list. That's my intention. And we are not deciding who is on or not in the stakeholder list or not here.
Okay, so we have both Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore's hands up. So I think we've had a back and forth here. Are there other comments from Councilmembers Way or Willie at this point? Okay, I'll go back to Councilmember Moore. Oh, sorry, one moment, Councilmember Way just raised her hand.
Yeah, I just want to say, as decision makers, city council members, we need to be open-minded, when anything comes to us. If we are deep in the process, it's hard to be open-minded. And I really think, I love the suggestion that we, a subcommittee decides on the stakeholders. That's the most important part we can do as a council member. We appoint stakeholders who have knowledge or who can, you know, work with staff and developers to come up with, come up with things that would come to us to approve. So as decision makers, we need to be not into this, the process, we need to look at the products, and then we need to be open-minded. So I'm very concerned of inserting ourselves into the process, and then be already predetermined what one of us or two of us would like to do. So I really suggest, you know, I understand, you know, Councilmember Moore's concern, and because you have such expertise in things like that, but we need to be making the final decision with an open mind. So I think that's why I would think being in the process is not a, it's not illegal, but it's not a good practice to, for us to do. And we, I'm sure we can find residents who have knowledge and who are good at this. And we, I'm sure we can find residents who have knowledge and who are good at this. And then, uh, the most important is we get to decide who are the stakeholders. I, I think that's very important.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Well, if I'm understanding what I, what I've been hearing, you're saying, uh, someone has been saying that the decision makers who are the, the, the city council are part of the stakeholders. Am I understanding that correctly? And then, and then at that point, we are, is that correct?
Yes, you are listed separately as decision makers. It says decision makers, stakeholders, et cetera. Who are the decision makers?
Okay, so that, that, that necessarily means that we are deep in the process? Because we are the stakeholders?
You'll be interviewed. You'll be interviewed, you're part of the interview group.
Okay, so my.
The other, the other thing I would suggest too is that, once these interviews happen, there are study sessions scheduled, so that for council and, for the city council and planning commission, well, all to weigh in. And then at the very top is that if, when we draft the standards, this, the council has another bite at the apple at, at that opportunity as well. So you're involved, but you should be, um, to your point of wanting to be present in some of those stakeholder meetings, it, you know, you want to have the weigh-in of everybody. And I just think it's gonna have, that part's gonna have a very chilling effect. I think everybody's staying, staying, sorry, saying the same thing, except for that piece.
Okay, uh, the, the, the problem I have here is it, also when you look at these deliverables, it says one-hour meetings with stakeholders. It doesn't say one-hour individual meetings, and it, there seems to be this assumption that those, those are, are one-on-one, uh, meetings. And what, what I envision is that you will have, uh, you will have a group meeting on, on Zoom or maybe in, in, in person at that point, um, where you have various developers sitting around a table, uh, with a couple of residents, um, maybe one or two council members and, uh, but, uh, that, that the, the balance of, of the room uh, could, could, uh, be such that, uh, there, there's an overwhelming, uh, push towards one outcome over, over another. And, uh, so that, that's my concern. Not, not about these one-on-one stakeholder interviews, but that when you have a group getting together, because this is not specifying in this, in this deliverable, what the format of these meetings are gonna be. So I just wanna make it clear that that, that's what, that is my concern. And, and having seen what looks like the exact same concern that I'm, uh, describing has already happened in the past, um, that, that we have, we have seen this happen before, and I don't want to see it, um, happen again.
Mayor, if I may?
Uh, yes, please, Director Fu.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, again, we, we, we have a different set of council and also city staff now. And this is, and like I said, it's, it's a different, different, uh, effort driving this, this project. Um, and in terms of the stakeholders' interviews, depending on the, the subcommittee and how you identify the individuals to participate in the stakeholder interviews, you, you could end up with individual interviews. You could end up with a set of, uh, individuals are, uh, quote-unquote, like-minded, right? So that idea we're trying to do is not for any particular group or individuals to feel intimidated, uh, in any way or, or any, by any relationship. So we'll certainly do our best to, to do that, well, we'll do our best, we will do that. And we'll, we'll obviously look for the, the subcommittee to help shape the participants in the stakeholder group.
And I, and I do appreciate the word intimidated, and I think that one of the things that we've actually seen happen is, is not so much intimidation, but is almost a, uh, uh, I, it's kind of a hard, uh, way to describe it, but that some things have been left out, perhaps, uh, in, in the general plan. Some objective standards here and there were never set, which opened the door for that to be exploited and, uh, you know, we need to, uh, it's, it was, so it, all done without any sense of intimidation, but with some glaring and missing objective standards, which, uh, um, I, I wouldn't wanna see, um, happen again. And, and I have looked over Los Altos, uh, Los Altos, uh, their, um, residential and mixed-use, uh, design standards, which they just recently, um, brought to their city council. And I, and I look at that as a, as a nice, neat, kind of a starting point for what this could look like. Um, so, yeah, I, I, I think that there, there, you know, we have some general, uh, uh, genuine concerns about, uh, protecting, uh, the, the community and that we end up with something that, that does what we really intend, um, for it to do.
Well, I, I'm not, you know, frankly, um, before I go to Vice Mayor Chow, I, I'm not really hearing, uh, consensus here, uh, with regard to, uh, one proposal or the other. And the sticking point really is whether council is present in these, uh, interviews. And perhaps it is a matter of, of trust in the process, um, given the idea that in the past, there have been some, um, experiences that, um, you, you know, some in our council and community would, would care not to, uh, repeat. Um, and I would reiterate the, uh, request that we essentially hold off on this topic of presence of council in these, uh, interviews, uh, such that in addition to being able to work with our staff, um, perhaps, uh, the benefit of some interaction with the consultant, uh, with our concerned, uh, council member or council members, uh, to, to, to see if there could be some trust in their, their process. You know, will you go ahead and conduct what we are looking at as, uh, an objective, open-minded interview process, keeping in mind that, uh, a- as described, these are confidential meetings. Um, so we, we can't even very well ask that they be, uh, recorded, o- of course, because, uh, then the interviewees won't have the comfort that, uh, these are truly confidential. And, and so if I could, um, suggest again that, uh, we take our common ground and we, uh, revisit the item with regard to presence of, uh, council in these interviews, um, then, then I would be happy to, to put that forward, uh, as a, as an amendment to, uh, the substitute motion, um, and, and to see if we can get consensus in that regard. Um, so we have Vice Mayor Chow. Um, we actually have another staffer with, with her hand raised, uh, Carrie Huesler. But, uh, I'm assuming that, that's not actually a, uh, well, maybe, maybe it is a, a hand up that wants to speak. But let's go to Vice Mayor Chow first, and then we'll go to, uh, any other hand that's raised. Vice Mayor Chow?
Okay, so I accept your amendment, but it seems there is a, a bit of disagreement or misunderstanding on what the stakeholder meetings. I envision that to be small groups of like-minded people. So developers will be in the same meeting, residents will be in a different meeting. They are not going to be one whole meeting with everyone together that Councilmember Moore feel that council has to be in this kind of meeting. I think the staff will take notes from these individual meetings. They are confidential, and then the feedback will be provided to us, uh, afterwards. They probably comments would be anonymous, but then we will get the feedback from all the stakeholders in, from the individual meetings. That's what I envision it to be. Therefore, I didn't think there is a need for the council member to sit in on such meetings. And there will be other opens that house, opens that decision later, where we will, the council will have a role. That's my understanding, yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Wei, you have your hand up now?
Well, I, in order for this to move on, I really will, uh, I, I agree with Councilmember Moore's concerns. So perhaps we can make it more open-ended on this ad hoc committee, but, um, we add residents in, approve this, uh, we, as we commented, add residents into the stakeholder and, um, establish an ad hoc committee for the council, and the function of the ad hoc committee will, can be decided later. Uh, something like that, so we can move on, yeah. And that comes later.
I accepted the Dorsey's, uh, supplement, uh, amendment to my motion. Do you agree also?
I'm a little confused with all this discussion. I, I really need to read that, yeah.
So you seconded my motion, which took off the requirement for council members to sit on stakeholders.
Right, but we're still part of.
The Mayor Paul proposed to postpone that decision until later. So I accepted his amendment. So now the motion is, um, Councilmember Moore's motion with the decision on whether council members should be sitting in on the stakeholder if you are not decided later. But there will be a subcommittee formed to help determine the stakeholder, uh, list.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. That was very, um, uh, very well put. Um, Councilmember Wei, do you accept that as a second of the substitute motion?
Sure, yes.
Okay. Okay, are, are there any other comments from either council or staff at this point? All right, with a substitute motion, the substitute motion is voted on first. If it is accepted, then, uh, we do not vote on the second motion, the original motion, rather. And if it is not accepted, then we do go forward to the motion on the table. Uh, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote for the substitute motion?
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
No.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries with, uh, Moore and Willie voting no.
Okay, uh, let us go on to, um, well, we're at nine o'clock right now. Uh, we've been going for approximately two hours. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break and reconvene at nine oh seven.
If I may, appointed process, I think now would be the time to select the SoCuni members or was that going to be?
That, that slipped my mind, actually. Uh, so, uh, I appreciate that. Let me, let me take that back, uh, for a moment. Would anyone like to volunteer for the subcommittee that, um, has been approved on, under item number fourteen?
Um, Mayor Paul, I have my.
I see Councilmember Wei with her hand raised?
I would like to advocate for myself, because I, I feel that I have forty-one years in Cupertino, and I'm real connected with all the groups, uh, with, um, so I believe, um, the, uh, stakeholders should be a lot of residents focused, and of course, with developers, what they want, but also with nonprofit and people who have young, younger generations who have a future in, um, you know, in, in, in moving Cupertino forward. And so I would really like to, um, introduce myself, because I am gonna be really open-minded, and I believe this process will benefit our city in moving forward as one. And so it's very important to collaborate with different opinions and make, make sure that we hear from everybody, everybody, I mean, everybody. We have different residents, we have different generations. So if you look at how I handled, um, you know, worked through, uh, a lot of, uh, issues, I feel that I'm a very open-minded and, and person that can, I really wanna contribute to this. And I believe, I love Cupertino, I know we all do. And I believe we really need to make this happen, make this collaborative effort to move forward as, as one, and then accommodate different ideas and then come up with real solutions. So I would like to recommend myself. So if you look at how I.
Okay, okay, I, I, I think we, we, we hear what you're saying. So, so you, you'd like to, uh, volunteer, uh, to, to serve on the subcommittee?
Absolutely, and I have the time and energy to do it.
Yeah, let, let, let me go on to see if there are any other people that would like to volunteer to serve on the subcommittee. I don't see any hands raised. Uh, Councilmember Willie?
Um, I'm happy to, to join the subcommittee. I wouldn't wanna prevent anyone else that has a, um, a stronger desire, but I'm happy to represent the community and, um, uh, try and, uh, come up with the best, uh, that we can, so.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Uh, anyone else like to speak before I invite a motion, uh, as to the composition of the subcommittee? I don't see any hands raised. Would anyone like to bring forward a motion with regard to the subcommittee composition? Excuse me.
Hey, so I, um, move to approve a motion to have a subcommittee consisting of Councilmember Willie and Councilmember Wei.
Okay, is there a second to Vice Mayor Chow's motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Chow motions, uh, Councilmember Wei seconds. Are there any comments to the motion that is now on the table?
Thank you, um, Councilmember Willie for, for serving. I, I thought when, I thought you and Councilmember Moore, one of you should serve on the committee, since you have more concern about, um, residents involvement. But if neither of you serve, I was prepared to serve, but thank you for stepping up.
Yeah, uh, great. And, uh, I'll, I'll just remind the subcommittee members that there is a, a request to, uh, come back to council before, um, the interviews are conducted, because we have left, uh, off the table, uh, the question of whether, uh, council members will be able to be present at these interviews. So, um, without any further comments or hands raised, I'll go ahead and call the question for the motion on the table for composition of the subcommittee to be comprised of Councilmembers Willie and Wei. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, and with a, um, a thank you to our, um, city clerk, as well as our, uh, Madam City Attorney for, uh, reminding me that we did have unfinished business on this item number fourteen. Uh, let us now, at this point, take that break. Uh, it's nine oh six, we'll reconvene at nine twelve. Thanks.